All right, let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence for all our brave men and women serving overseas. All right, welcome everyone. Okay, thanks Tom.
Kathy's good too.
What's he saying?
We'll start with announcements, I just want to announce we had an executive session discussing litigation, pending litigation and ongoing litigation. I guess we'll start with Jess, public, I'm sorry, announcements?
Okay, good morning everyone, afternoon, what am I saying, evening. Good evening everyone, I'm so glad that everybody's here, there's a lot of chairs available if you'd like to come out. Meeting started already but you still have time to get here. It's a beautiful day outside, spring has sprung, the flowers are starting to come out, so enjoy the outside, pass a smile along, I've noticed when I've been driving through the neighborhood seeing people walking, everybody's kind of frowning, nobody's smiling, so smile back at your neighbor, get to know everybody and welcome spring with a smile, thank you.
Chuck?
Top that one.
I can't, I can't top that, I have no announcement at this time, thank you.
All right Judy, with a smile please.
Okay, with a smile, I'm happy to be back and I'm sorry that I have no particular announcements for you except that this Saturday at the library, we're having a wonderful program concerning the stars and there's a mini planetarium, I think the cost is $15 you pay for a ticket at the library, so try and bring your family out to some fun science on Saturday.
Happy spring, make sure you're careful because a lot of the kids are running around now, playing ball in the streets, whatever they're doing, or while they're getting on the buses, just be careful with the younger kids when they're out and about. Thank you, that's it, Mr. Chair.
Thanks Kathy. All right, I have a couple announcements, so you know, in light of things going on down in Washington, we got a notification from Senator Fetterman's office that the monies that our police chief had requested, $275,000 for in-car police cameras, hardware and software, and another $735,000 for new police radios, we are not going to receive that money, I guess because of continuing resolution or whatever, they removed that funding that we were looking for to help our police officers do their job. So I will be working with Congressman Fitzpatrick and our state representative Brian Monroe and state Senator Frank Ferry to see if we can't get some of this money because we definitely need these upgrades. I think they've reached their life end, isn't that right Chief, the cameras?
Cameras, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so we really need to get this to help our officers do their job. The other thing I'd like to announce, sorry to be the bearer of bad news, in spite of our retirement funds being destroyed today, we're also waiting for $300,000 to be repaid by FEMA as part of the SAFER grant to pay for our firemen, so these are all emergency management people that are being denied funding from the federal government, our people down in Washington, so I would ask that you write a letter or contact Congressman Fitzpatrick, Senator Fetterman and Senator McCormick and ask them to reconsider and see if we can't get our funding for emergency management, our place in fire. Other than that, we can get started. We don't have any presentations but I'm going to ask our tax collector to come up here, she has a pressing engagement so we're going to let her come up and speak.
Hello everyone, thank you Chairman. Yes, there's conflicting meetings tonight, so I appreciate the courtesy. I just have some updates I want to share with everyone, so Nicole Rainier, tax collector, some updates of the payments received, as of today we've collected 1,616 out of the 10,437 bills that have been mailed out, so we're really ramping up especially with April here. Everyone should have received their bill by now, if you haven't for some reason, please reach out to our office, I can print you a new one, email it to you, we'll figure it out, make sure that you have a copy of that. Now that we're in April again, tis the season for taxes, so a reminder that the discount deadline is April 30th to receive the 2% discount off the face of your bill. After April 30th, the face value will be due until June 30th, and then after June 30th is a 10% penalty added to the face amount of your bill until the end of the year, December 31st, and then after that means they're put on the property, which we want to avoid. There are a lot of special hours that we're doing this month to help people really receive that discount, we want to help enable that as much as we can, accommodate that for people. First I want to mention we're having an open house this Saturday, April 5th from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, all are invited, we'll have late refreshments, and people are also welcome to pay their taxes that day if they like. April 26th, it's also a Saturday, will be open from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM to accommodate people, as well as on Tuesday, April 29th and Wednesday, April 30th, we're going to have extra hours, be open from 9:00 AM to 5:30 PM. I'm also visiting some communities to receive tax payments, we'll be in Centennial Station and the Ballroom on Monday, April 7th from 12:30 to 1:30 PM, and then on Wednesday, April 9th from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. Five Ponds Clubhouse Library on Monday, April 14th from 12:00 to 1:00 PM and Wednesday, April 16th from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. Again, I'm really happy to accommodate people however best, you know, works for you, please let me know if there are any other communities where people want us, want me to come by, happy to do that, just reach out to our office, I'm happy to work that out for those arrangements. You can contact us by phone, just the phone number is (215) 443-8282, by email, tax collector, all one word, at warminstorpa.org. The website we have is www.warminstortaxcollector.com, and we're also on social media, both Facebook and Instagram, backslash Warminstor Tax Collector. We also have an email list, so if anyone wants to be added to that, we'll be sending out updates and those deadlines as well, just as a reminder for people. One other reminder I want to give everyone is the $55 senior trash discount, there are three criteria for that, one is to have the refuse on your bill, the $440 fee for the trash, the service by the township. You also must be, it must be your primary home residence, and you must be 62 years of age in the year 2025. You can show us a copy of your license if you come and pay in person, you can send in a copy of it in the mail if you send in a check, or you can also email a copy of us to that, email a copy of that to us, and then you deduct the $55 from your amount, or we'll do a rebate after May 15th especially for people that have mortgage payments, and we'll send an email reminder again to that listserv. So that's pretty much all the things, there's a lot going on in April, again, reach out if anyone has any questions or we could give any assistance, (215) 443-8282, tax collector at warminstorpa.org. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you Nicole.
Thanks Nicole.
And happy spring, nice to have warmer weather, so.
Yeah, looking forward to it.
Thanks everyone.
You're welcome. All right, thank you Nicole, land use matters, I'll hand this off to Mr. Halbert, Mr. Kenner.
Yeah, so this is a preliminary and final land development application for 705 York Road, this is the former Perkins site, it's a approximate 1,700 square foot building addition for another restaurant use, developer, property owner is represented by Mr. Doug Mahoney who's here to just talk a little bit about the project as they got a pretty clean review letter and minimal variance or waiver requests, so not too big of a project but it's a good one to hear about, so.
Thank you, it's Maloney.
Sorry.
I was telling the time. Good evening, again, it's Maloney representing the applicant, and it is a very simple application, it's the existing Perkins Restaurant, or vacant Perkins Restaurant that's been there for many, many years I understand, been vacant for about a year, it's going to be an Asian fusion restaurant, and I know nothing about Asian fusion dining, so don't ask me any menu questions. It's a very simple application and the only change to the existing structure is a small, about a 1,700 square foot addition that will accommodate some additional dining that you can see on the southeast corner, that's the lower right-hand side of the building, there's going, no changes to the existing entranceway which is located on Roberts Road, is far away from York Road as the property accommodates, drive, traffic circulation inside is one way, we made a minor adjustment to the parking field adjacent to Archbishop Wood by angling those to make for a larger or wider drive aisle in that area, they were perpendicular stalls before that. We're adding vegetation to the area and we have reviewed, and that's about it, there really isn't much to talk about on this project. We are asking for three waivers that are very minor in nature, we've reviewed the proposed approval resolution and our client is accepting of all the various conditions on there which are really very simple, compliance with the Township Engineering last review letter of March 20, all the items on that review letter are will comply, compliance with the emergency management and services review letter as well, and all those items are will comply. All the other items on the resolution are satisfactory. The three waiver requests involve a waiver to allow a single submission for both preliminary and final, a partial waiver to allow the use of an aerial photograph to show the existing site conditions, and the use of that photograph is subject to the discretion of the Township Engineer, if the Township Engineer requires additional details on the hard copy of plan that they will be supplied, and finally, a waiver from some of the requirements for landscape buffers, we're adding additional landscaping on the plan and that waiver is conditioned upon us complying with certain modifications recommended by the Township Engineer which he included on that review letter of March 20, and that condition is acceptable as well. So that's it in a nutshell, if you have any questions about the engineering, we actually have two engineers for this project. This evening, we have Adam Prince who is present to make any, answer any of your questions, and he's with Vince Ferravanti Engineering, and his boss Vince Ferravanti is present as well, so we can ably respond to any of your questions regarding engineering on this project.
Guys came loaded for bear, huh?
Yeah.
Sort of overkill, I guess.
Yeah, I think so.
I don't like to be outnumbered.
Mr. Chairman, just to add, the one comment was, and they've worked with us in our office on the landscaping, there's existing landscaping on the property already, so that's why it's a partial waiver, and they, they worked with us on sprucing up the front of the property which is really nice. I think one of the comments, and it's probably referenced in that March 20th markup, but I had personally made a comment about, we have some conflicts with the, at the intersection with the signage, slight distance, slight visibility, you see, they did a great job of landscaping, but I recommend moving some of it over to the Archbishop Wood common property line, there's a small gap there, so it's the same, pretty much same amount of landscaping, so it doesn't cost anymore, but that was that change, I didn't like how that looked at the end, so they agreed to that, and I have no other comments like Scott said.
I have a question Craig, for stormwater, do you have any concerns about that, because everything that I read that, you know, they will comply, work with you, so are there any issues on that property that you know of?
No, I didn't know of any current issues, they're actually reducing the impervious.
Right, which is great.
Yeah, so if they were adding it would be a different story, but they're actually slightly decreasing, that was due to the fact that the building is over the existing parking lot, so. The biggest issue was the circulation with the bump out of that building addition, I had recommended, and it's something that we internally struggle with, providing sidewalk around the building, and they accommodated that, that way people can, that caused some problems with limited access there, so it worked out in the end, I think it's a good layout, and I think pedestrians will be safe, a place to get off, and then they angled the parking and provide additional buffering there, and that's the only real impact to the property is that corner.
Thank you.
I have no issues with drainage, everything else will comply, like Scott said, it's a pretty straightforward project, but I know the township's looking forward to this being occupied again.
And it's also nice to, right, to have it occupy, have it look really pretty in the township, and also you're working with a crew that's really willing, like look, they brought the whole crew with them. So I think it's going to work out fine, thank you.
All right, I have no questions, I mean, appreciate the fact that you're sprucing up the landscaping and making it an attractive building again, and we look forward to the opening.
I was impressed at how quickly you could save that entire thing.
Any other comments? So is there a motion to accept resolution 2025-10?
Motion.
I'll second that.
Any other questions or comments, questions or comments from the public? All right, being done, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Good luck with the.
Send you the updated one for them to sign.
Yeah, that would be fine, thank you.
Will do.
Good night.
Good night. All right, Kathy, favorite time, public comment, come on up sir, you seem to be the only one tonight.
Dave Rudan, Warmminster resident, reason I came down here tonight is having to do with coyotes in the township park, and just say, I really didn't want to come down here tonight, I tried to reach out to Jessica Fox four times in the last two weeks, to no avail, I asked for a call back, she knew the nature of the call, nothing, oh I just needed some information, and here I am. So that being said, being retired, now I walk the park five times a week, all three, three miles around the perimeter, even in the winter, and about a month ago, there was a large blood trail going across the trail over by Shenandoah Woods, and you look down in the ravine and there's a 175 to 200 pound deer with the stomach eaten out of it. And they go, okay, it's not one coyote managed to do that, to take down a deer that size, and the next day, the whole carcass was up the 12-foot ravine and on the other side, and down to a rib cage at that point. So it gets a little concerning, and what brought this more to my attention is, I know where the den is for the coyotes, because it's on the Shenandoah side, about three-quarters of the way up, it looks like a front-end loader dumped a load of fresh dirt, because they've been digging out, living in there, and last week, I stopped to look at it, and here's a 50 to 60 pound coyote standing there. And the concern is, it's not like the West where the coyotes are 30 pounds, and the eastern coyotes from what I read are, they're half-bred wolves, and they're much bigger, and this was a big animal I'm looking at. And in the past, I have heard them numerous times with their yelping and whatnot in different distances, so I know there's more than one, okay. So my point of my, my question I have for the board here is, is the township going to do something about this since, in my opinion, public safety has something to do with having a park where you have children playing, we put up signs that say, hey, no smoking, young ones are play, you have to wear a helmet when you ride a bike, but then the township would allow to have apex predators living a couple hundred yards away from children playing. Now, I did make a phone call to the PA Wildlife and Gabe Commission, I explained to them what it was, and he said what would have to happen if we want to eradicate the coyotes from the park, is the township would have to make the phone call, and they would have a subcontractor, they don't do it themselves, to come out to get rid of the coyotes. Obviously, a private resident can't do that because it's on township property, so you guys have ownership of it.
We'll be happy to make that call for you.
Well, I was, I'm glad to hear that, because the concern I had would be this, they have four to seven pups a year, how big is the population going to get bordering that whole residency all around the park, on the east side of the park?
Yeah, I live over there.
Yeah, I mean, like, you might be missing your cat or your dog one night, just saying, but, and then I have a four-year-old grandson, and I don't need to be looking over my shoulder while I'm walking the trail, even though people tell you that the coyotes won't bother you, but that's a maybe.
We'll, we'll, we'll take care of that for you. We already sent somebody out to look and evidently they didn't find it, but we'll make that call to the state.
I would be happy to meet someone to point to the den.
And that would be fantastic.
I would be very happy to do that.
We'll arrange that, so if you could go to Joe and give your contact information, then we'll, we'll take care of that for you.
Sure, sure, I greatly appreciate it.
Great, you're welcome.
And to tell you the truth, I didn't think it would be this simple. I was, I was half expecting.
An argument?
There was.
Oh, no, that's not how we operate.
Well, the township, the park people, they, they're aware that there is coyotes there. They are.
Someone had told them that there were, and they sent someone out to look for the den, and evidently they didn't find it, but if you're willing to, if you're willing to show.
If it was in the last two weeks it was made.
Well, if you're willing to show them where it is, then please give Joe your information and then we'll take care of it.
You got it, thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Is the deer carcass gone?
Uh, yes, yeah, and it's, it's concerning that there has to be more than one to be holding a carcass that size around.
Yeah, I mean, unless the deer was hit and it was dead, that, you know, well, you never know, I mean, deer get hit and they still can run.
And that wasn't the first one I found.
Right, okay, well, thank you. All right, anyone else?
It's 205-18.
All right, finance, or I'm sorry, consent agenda, so consider approval of board supervisor's minutes dated March 13th, 2025, consider new lease for the tax collector, which I'm assuming is the same as the existing lease.
Same terms, just change the tenant name.
Yes, okay. Consider settlement for a tax assessment appeal, the automotive training center, and that's in the Franklin Court Business Park, I believe, and consider Aldi Inc., 260 East Street Road, release number one, final from the escrow count in the amount of $792,754.60. Is there a motion?
Make a motion that we accept the consent agenda. I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
All right, any questions or comments from the board?
No.
From the public? Being done, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero, thank you. All right, finance report, Chuck?
Finance report, thank you, Mr. Chair. Bill lists dated March 20th, 2025 in the amount of $689,779.31, with a supplemental bill listed March 31st, 2025 in the amount of $1,156,462.26, for a grand total of $1,846,241.57.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments from the board, questions or comments from the public, being done, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero. John, you want to tell us what great shape we are and alleviate all the fallacies that are flying around?
I will be very happy to do so.
Thank you.
So through the end of February, give it, we're only two, two months in, revenues are actually up over $200,000 from the end of February last year, and expenses are down, like even with increases in expenses, like revenue, or salaries, benefits and stuff like that, expenses are actually down $24,000 over a two-month period. Compared to budget, we're running almost exactly like last year, revenues are at 12%, last year we were at 11%, expenses are exactly at 14, and we were at 14 last year, so we are running, it was comparably to last year, which last year was a good year, so if we just keep running like last year, it'll be fantastic. Other great news that I always like to bring to everyone's attention, on Monday, we received the state liquid fuels distribution, it was $927,000 that we get, and that goes into the paving program, and some of the things, the curb program that we're doing right now, so this goes into keeping those infrastructure projects that we're doing, that's a big part of it, is getting that money, and it also says that everything is okay with the state because they won't give us money, they check every other department and say, is everything in good standing, so we know we're in good standing throughout the entire state departments, so the fact that we got the money is a good sign.
Awesome, John, thank you.
Thanks for the awesome report.
And thanks for the state for giving us such a, for doing such a good job and getting us that money, that's very important.
That is important.
All right, thank you. Glad to hear that, that we're, our revenues are more than our deficits. All right, no one finished business, new business, let's consider the award of the Warmest Township 2025 program contract, CN 2025-02 to NJS Concrete LLC in the amount of $342,598 for all items under the base bid and alternate one, subject to verification that the firm meets the requirements of the township's responsible contractor ordinance. Is there a motion?
I'd like to accept.
I second.
Any questions or comments? Some more, you know, it's nice that we can fund this because this is another unfunded mandate by the, by the state and the government, and we can, you know, we're, we're in great financial shape that we can afford to pay for this, so that's my only comment. Craig?
No, everything's in order, you get five bids, they're, they're all competitive, you have the same team as the last few years for paving and concrete work, so it's, it's really nice and efficient when we're working with the exact same people, I'm sure Tom and his staff in Public Works enjoy that as well, so have a good relationship with both of them, and I have no other comments except, I think there's 66 ramps in this year's program, six, yeah, including the alternate would be 66 total.
And if I may? Yes, certainly. Pre-con, remind them, you know, to bring the port to John.
Yes, please.
All right.
Also Craig, on the, on the curb ramps, are you doing approximately as much as you did last year?
Um, I think.
Would you say?
I think a little bit more.
Oh, a little bit more, okay.
Yes. Yeah, that, yes, I think I have last year.
Yeah, I believe because the work that we're going to do in the Speedway, there's not a lot of curb ramps, so we'll catch up on everything from last year.
I think I write, thank you.
Originally we had, we keep moving around depending on the paving, and actually we did more this year with the, like Mr. Hayes said, with the paving of the, with the Warmester Authority.
Yes.
So, and it really depends each year.
Right, okay, okay.
But we've been at around 50, 60, 54 a couple years ago, so.
That's awesome.
It's a little higher this year, but.
Okay, thank you.
It's not the highest.
Yes, very high.
All right, so we had a motion and a second, if I recall, any other questions or comments from the board, from the public, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries five zero, and NJS has been doing this for quite a few years now, and they do a good job.
Correct.
All right, thank you. Professional reports, Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I have two things I wanted to go over, the first is I would acknowledge, our assistant manager Lisa Howteshaw had a, had a, a big honor over the weekend, last weekend, she was invited to Villanova University to take part in a panel that was, talked about women in government, women in government and local government, and it was at Villanova, and it was a big turnout, and we're all very proud of her.
Yes. Yes, let's give her a hand. Hey Lisa!
I'm sure she's watching.
She's at the Phillies game.
She's watching us on TV.
Not anymore. She's probably playing pickleball.
Yeah, right.
The other thing is, our next scheduled meeting is April the 17th, and I'll ask the board for its pleasure about keeping or punting on that one.
Any objections if we cancel the second monthly meeting? No objections? All right, cancel that.
So the one scheduled after that is for May the 1st.
Okay.
Is everybody okay with that one?
The first day never comes.
Absolutely.
Yep.
It's going to be a beautiful, bright sunny day.
Thank you very much, that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Halbert?
Happy spring, nothing else tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Kenner, can you beat that for shortness?
Oh, no.
I don't think I've ever done that. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, you have our April's engineers' report, your esteemed manager was whispering in my ear earlier, asking, what's next, are we bidding? So we will be, the next project we're working on to, or bid in award is Warmminster Community Park Trail Paving, and it probably won't be till, he doesn't know this, unless he's read my report, probably not till July, but I'm trying to figure out, it's going to be expensive, Jess is working with my staff, we have our landscape architects involved, along with Aaron and Andrew, trying to work out how to handle this pain, it's a lot, so probably be not till July, but we've been staying pretty busy otherwise with a lot of other projects in the Township, so.
And that police roof, it's coming along great.
Yes. Yeah, we finally got. Least amount of disturbance, Jim, no one's, no one's wearing a hard hat over there lately?
Some came down along our house and took their head off.
Oh!
Yeah, it was one of these events.
Oh!
Even more of an emergency.
Yeah, well, fortunately, no one got hurt on that, that's, you know, but other than that, we are putting on a new roof, and it's going along splendidly, and they're doing a great job, and I believe that once they're done that, at some point, they're going to put the new roof on the Warner Park snack stand as well, because that blew off during the storm.
Yeah.
Yes. So thank you to the contractor.
Rob Ganter.
Yeah, Ganter Roofing, yes, thank you. All right, is that it?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Craig. All right, Tom, I think we jumped the gun on the upcoming agenda items, but we will cancel the second meeting in April, first, next meeting for the Township will be May 1st.
May the 1st.
Yes. So now we get to supervisors' comments. Dennis, would you like to start?
Sure, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight, and I hope you have a great week, enjoy this month.
Chuck?
Yeah, thank you for everyone. Enjoy the weather with the spring coming and all, I'd also like to wish everyone a happy Easter, Passover, and just watch out for the kids out there, enjoy.
Judy?
Thank you for tuning in and coming today, I hope that some of you are out there tuning into our meeting. I just wanted to remind you that there's a great library event on Saturday for the kids, with stars and planetariums and all kinds of things, and if you come out on Saturday, excuse me, to the community park to see the tax collector, you can also come to the trash recycling event that we're having, that the state representative has sponsored, you enter on the Bristol roadside, and there'll be a shredding event there on Saturday from 10 to 12.